All right, it is seven P M on Tuesday, October twenty eighth, and I'm going to call this meeting of the town council to order. Would you do a roll call, Cloris, please? Click push.
Mayor Franklin.
Present.
Councilmember Brooks.
Present on Zoom.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Here.
Councilmember La.
Here.
Councilmember Irvin.
Here.
Coming.
Good seeing.
Eric Obama.
Here.
Peter.
Here.
All right, we can raise, dance for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to review of tonight's agenda. We have per diem, which is a policy, which is a board vote, and ordinance twenty twenty five oh seven, which is council salary, which also council vote. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, all who consent to the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 The next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The.
Second.
All who approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
I do have one question about it.
You have discussion.
So, I noticed just now that the treasurer's report is September twenty twenty five, budget versus actual for the what's in the bank accounts, and then it is August twenty twenty five from treasurer's report that has the budget versus actuals. Sorry, that's the one that has the revenue and expenses.
Okay.
I don't know if that's just a title mistake, or if this is last month's.
Town administrator Anderson, page two of the treasurer's report, and the title, it says July twenty twenty five to August twenty twenty five. But page one says to September twenty twenty five. Do you know if that's a typo, or, because I don't have last month's. Wait for me, let me see how quick I can pull it up.
Hold on one second.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull up last month's record report.
Hold on one second.
I'm trying to pull it up as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking.
Say again?
So it matches.
Yeah, it's last month's, so.
All right.
That's, what I would say is, Commissioner Law, if you don't mind retracting your motion, and Commissioner Colbert seconding it, and I'll rephrase it for you.
Okay, I retract my motion.
We're drawing a circle.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with out page seven, to be provided next month?
The.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to business, and we'll start with the council per diem policy, which is a council vote, and I will turn it over to our town administrator to give us an overview.
Well, can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, the, what you have before you tonight is, it is a draft recommendation of a per diem policy. And it basically gives examples of what would be eligible for per diem. It also discusses travel guidelines and how travel expenses would be reimbursed. At the previous meeting, I think the, the council was looking for an advance of the per diem and not necessarily a reimbursement. Now, what you have before you tonight doesn't really give you what the potential budget impacts would be for F Y twenty six, but it does basically do a roadmap of what a potential per diem policy would look like based on the comments from the previous council meeting.
I know there's probably other questions. I just have a question, because under the, the version where there's an advance, and under any version, we have to submit paperwork, which is totally like, we, we need to submit the paperwork. My question is, if we don't want an advance, if we're fine being reimbursed after travel, do we have to submit the request before, or can we submit it after travel generally? Because I will say that frequently when I'm getting ready to travel, I'm very busy, and I'm happy to just submit it after, but I, I want to make sure that that type of thing is considered in here.
Well, can I just say?
Can I say something?
I'm.
Go ahead. So I've had a question on the way the policy is written, so.
But we can answer that. What, it's okay, go ahead, Anderson, sorry.
So, so basically, if, if you wanted, if if the, if staff is to prepare the per diems based on a conference or travel, you would basically get it beforehand anyway. There wouldn't be paperwork for you to necessarily turn in. If for some reason, there was some travel that we didn't know about, of course, you, you could just tell us about the travel. If it meets the criteria, then you would be given the per diem for that. You wouldn't necessarily need things like receipts and things like that. So, I, I don't know if that answers the question that you have.
Oh, so we're not putting the, it's not going to be the commissioners' responsibility to submit their own paperwork. Staff is going to complete the commissioner's paperwork for them.
Right, so, so for example, if, I will use the M M L conference as, as an example. So staff is already aware of when the conference is. We would just prepare the per diem there, because there's, the, you really don't have any paperwork to submit. It's, you know, whatever the, the standard rate is, is what you're going to receive. So you don't necessarily have to submit receipts and things like that. And based on the, based on the length of the conference, we will prepare the per diem request for you.
Okay.
So.
And is that a lot of?
That's what actually.
Sorry, my question is, is that a lot of staff time?
No, no, it's, it's, no, it's not, it's not.
Okay, cool, cool. That was all my questions. Does anyone else have a question?
I didn't know, of course, in a hurry. As I stated before, when they're doing the lodging and the, and the, of the hotels and, and stuff like that, that's why it just made sense to go ahead and do the, you know, to do everything at once, instead of us come back and then submit mileage when they know exactly where we're going, because they booked everything. And that's, that's, it just makes it cleaner and smoother.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Is there some question?
Is that?
Yeah. One of the questions is, is this per diem and mileage policy going to be part of, already part of a more fulsome reimbursement policy? I mean, and this isn't, you know, addressing a lodging and other things that may become, you know, reimbursable for any of these type of engagements. Are we, do we have a plan to include all of that and the more fulsome, fulsome policy going forward to make sure that we're all operating under the same guidelines and assumptions when we're, when we're engaging in these activities?
So typically with, with lodging, I mean, with the conferences, there's a set number of, of choices and options that, you know, that the council members have to choose from. We typically haven't chosen the specific hotels for council members, but if, if you wanted to put forth a policy that, you know, of the available options, you would choose these expense for, you know, middle of the road, I guess, you could do that. Is, is that what you were asking? I'm not, not sure.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that's what I'm getting at, I'm just, you know, making sure we're, again, operating under the same assumptions, holding, you know, ourselves accountable. We don't want to be in a situation where, you know, there's an expectation that everyone is, you know, they're, we're all attending a conference, everyone's staying in one hotel. And I, and I've done this, I've stayed at a separate hotel, but I've made sure it's within the same price range of the hotel that was booked, the town, so make sure we're not too out of whack with one versus the other, so that, again, we can estimate expenses properly and account for that. So that's just why I'm asking that question.
And it also makes sense too, Colbert, because normally during M M L, you know, you get all the hotel rates, and you kind of can see, you know, where you want to stay based on, we're staying in, within a certain budget range.
Right, right.
And they give us discounted prices at that time, so that's also taken into consideration.
I think, kind of to the point of the policy, I, I too have stayed at different hotel. I always make sure that it's cheaper than hotel that is being booked through the conference, saves the town money. So I think there's a couple ways to, to look at it, like, one, you know, the town will decide what hotel to book, and then commissioners may choose to book elsewhere as long as the price is less, or they can only be reimbursed up to the price that. Or I know, like, some towns, the, frankly, that the commissioner, that council people, they take care of everything themselves, and they have a reimbursable amount. So your lodging is reimbursable up to a hundred and fifty dollars. You submit yourself, and we'll give you a hundred and fifty dollars per. So that's one part, we can look at those different policies, but I think you're right, that in addition to the per diem, it might be worth looking at the lodging policy as maybe not holding this up to do it.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to say, I'm suggesting we hold this up tonight, but just keeping that on the radar to have a fulsome policy that addresses all of those types of nuances.
And I've, I've seen when working for the federal government, because if they have a per diem limit on lodging, I've had times where they would not let me stay in the conference hotel because it was not an approved conference. And so I had to stay elsewhere, and by that, I had to get a rental car and pay for parking and stuff like that, when I could have just gotten a taxi there, stayed there for the week. And so it actually ended up costing me more money by maintaining the per diem.
Yeah, there's, there are levels of analysis that can be done.
Okay.
Most types of things. The second question I had, so the, the process, and when it comes to the request, is it going to be, you know, simply an email with details that, you know, constitutes the request, or is there another process that you're thinking of instituting or, or implementing to, to handle all of these?
Well, again, typically staff will, you know, when, when they're, when it's conference time, you know, staff will send out an email to all of the commissioners, as, the council members, asking, you know, these are the hotel choices, where would you like to stay? And then we make the arrangements based on that. So there's not necessarily going to be a different, different process. Now, the, I did want to touch on the transportation. Now, I want everyone to, to be certain that, you know, the, the transportation costs are going to be reimbursed. Everyone's going to have the, the same starting point, which is going to be town hall, right? And the travel's going to be reimbursed at the, we're, we're not going to reimburse that farthest, you know, what, you know, the farthest, it's going to be the shortest distance, okay? And then that, that makes it easy for staff as well, because everyone's starting from the same place, everybody has the same travel. Now, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that was clear.
So that point would be from town hall to the actual conference, right?
Town hall to the conference, yes. The shortest route.
Okay, any other questions?
So, I don't know if it's qualified the question or concern, because there was a discussion of not having the people necessary for, for these. The eligibility is very wide, because meetings with state or federal employees or legislative advocacy days for similar activities. So you drive up to Annapolis, meet with somebody, does that automatically give you the per diem for the day, you know, or, you know, should there be a distance requirement? It's an overnight thing, or something of that sort? You know, we don't want to make it, because I, my understanding is that the reason that this stopped was because of complaints that, you know, elected officials were getting too much reimbursement this way.
Generally, what I've, what I've seen in terms of things like driving up to Annapolis, if it's a day trip, if you're going up and down on the same day, you're not getting a per diem. You don't have the mileage, because that's not a part of your normal coming to town hall, but you wouldn't get a per diem for a same-day per diem would be, would kick in if there's an overnight stay.
Typically.
It's usually forty miles or more.
Typically, what happens now is when I go to Annapolis to testify on behalf of the town, the town just pays my parking. I don't, they don't pay my mileage, I don't, that, that's what has been happening. I don't know how people feel about this, but yeah, per diem isn't, isn't really necessary, but parking in Annapolis can be a lot on, on your own budget when you're testifying for the town.
That makes sense.
Should we modify this, Clayton? Or it won't matter, because you're not going to get per diem, right?
Well, actually.
You wouldn't receive per diem.
You'd have to submit something to the town manager, and he will let you know that it's not going to qualify. You know what I mean? He's, you know, basically using his discretion. So I think it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Commissioner Brooks, did you have any questions?
No, I mean, I just remember that when we go on conferences, we always were giving an option, and we get, they would say, give us two options of, two or three options of a hotel, and we would pick from that. So that's all, you know, I had to say, but it was always an option that was given to us, and you get to pick from that.
All right, so we're not really making any changes to this document, if I understand that correctly. So I think we're ready to take public comment.
Well, can I, I'm sorry, can I, you know, well, I'm, I'm sorry, mayor. There is a part of the document, there's a question about, is this going to be in advance? I think, to clarify, yes, this, this would be in advance and not a reimbursement. I think that would be the only clarification.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone have any strong opinions on advance versus reimbursement? Okay.
Oh, excuse me.
If no one has any strong opinions, what is easiest for staff to do it in advance or do it as a reimbursement?
In advance.
Okay, then I think we should do what's easiest and less time-consuming for staff, so that they can focus on serving the public. Does anyone, anyone oppose to that? Okay.
The parking fees and tolls might be unknown at the time of the advance.
I think the advance is up for the per diem, or the, the. Yeah, and if you have, or receipt, parking receipts, whatever, you would still submit that, just like you would hotel.
It actually says you don't need receipts, which I would almost prefer the use of receipts for.
Well, for tolls, you're often not going to have receipts, but for parking, you will.
At least for EZ Pass, you can log into their site and like, get on this to take.
Yes, but the toll, unless you're on the I C C, which why are we on the I C C? Your toll is going to be fixed. So maybe.
It's like, you know, going to Ocean City is one toll. Though not coming.
Okay, so I can, so what we're going to do is, I'm going to remove this, we'll put a line through the section, starting at documentation requirements. Right, because that's the, not just that section, Clayton?
Uh, yes, to go up.
And then, on page two, we're going to say, instead of parking fees and tolls, will be reimbursed without the need to submit receipts, we'll say, tolls. Or we can just, we can just require receipts for both of them. I guess that's true. But we can also just say, parking, parking fees will require receipts, tolls do not require receipts.
Okay.
Actually, as I'm thinking about it.
All right.
For, there might be meters or something like that, where you wouldn't, if you're putting coins in. Yeah, you can take a picture meter.
Yeah, usually, I mean, I just have to go, I think, I don't think there's meters in Annapolis, I think.
No, you just pay, just tag, send the, you know, type the message.
Okay, so let's just, instead of saying, we'll be reimbursed upon submission of receipts, instead of with no, without the need to?
For parking fees?
For parking and tolls upon submission of receipts. Does that work for you, Clayton?
Okay.
The tolls, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to include tolls in that. Because if you know, if we're going to, just for instance, if we're going to M M L, we're going to Ocean City, we know it's only one toll. Going, and there's no, not a toll coming back, that's eight dollars.
Six, I think.
It's eight.
Okay, so parking fees and, okay.
I'm not talking about parking. If you have to park, I, I just.
I'm working on rewriting it, because we're, we're voting on this tonight, so we have to have written what we're going to. So let's say part, let's say tolls. Tolls will be, tolls will be, tolls incurred during official travel will be, will be reimbursed without the need to submit receipts. Second bullet, parking fees incurred during travel.
Will need a receipt.
Reimbursed upon submission of receipts. So we're adding a, I was trying to avoid an extra sentence, but we're just adding a bullet point.
So we're, we're adding in a, right.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Now that everyone knows what we're talking about voting on, we'll go ahead and take public comment on this. If you are online, please raise your hand. If you are in the room, please come to the podium. We ask that, try to keep your comments to three minutes, please state your name and the street you live on.
No, I. Your group's assembly elections, okay.
Okay. There, is there any public comment online? I don't think I see that. So hearing no public comment, is there a motion to approve the town of Oklahoma per diem and mileage policy for council members as amended?
The.
Is there a second?
My second.
Okay, I'm going to actually give that to Councilman Colbert, because he came through first, Councilman Brooks. Sorry, would you follow that? Would you do a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Franklin? Aye.
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 Councilmember. Aye. Councilmember.
Okay. And we will move on to mayor and council salary. I'm going to turn that back over to Administrator Anderson to take us through that and read it into the record.
All right. Okay, well, I was, I was going, I was hoping that Blair would read it into the record.
Oh, right, right, I'm sorry. It's your show now, you direct.
Thank you, man, thank you, members of the council. I'll be reading ordinance number twenty twenty five oh eight. Good evening to the public. And you're due saying ordinance number twenty twenty five oh eight, an ordinance of the town council, of the town of Oklahoma, to establish the salary for council members, the mayor and vice mayor, commencing January first, twenty twenty six.
Thank you. Now, we'll turn it over to you, Administrator Anderson, to just do a review of what we're doing here.
All right, so this ordinance was discussed at a town meeting on October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. It was introduced on October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. After discussion with the council, it was decided that the only change to the original ordinance would be clarification to what the total compensation for the mayor and vice mayor will be. So basically, what this ordinance does, it, it increases the salary of the current council members from thirty-eight hundred dollars annually to five thousand dollars annually. It also reduces the mayor's salary from fifteen thousand dollars annually to seven thousand, fifteen thousand dollars in addition to the thirty-eight hundred. So it, it reduces that fifteen thousand to seven thousand, okay? For a total of twelve thousand dollars per year for the mayor, where the mayor was recent, was previously receiving fifteen thousand plus the thirty-eight hundred, which made it eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars per year. The vice mayor is a newly established position after the change in form of, of government. So the vice mayor would receive a salary of two thousand dollars per year in addition to the five thousand dollars, for a total of seven thousand dollars per year. This ordinance would take effect January first, twenty twenty six.
Are there any questions?
And that's.
Is there a reason it's taking effect on January first, rather than the first day of the new commission?
Um, well, that was, I, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I could be wrong, I'm guessing, right? But you pay out at the end of the quarter, and so you'll be paying the five of us for our work at the end of twenty twenty six. Because, so if they put it in effect, it would be our own salary, instead of the next board's salary. That has to be the next board's salary.
But the commissioners officially go in on December eighth, is the start of their term, so.
That is true, but still, there's one more salary payment that is given to the current board, or the new board happens, and so it lasts for at least in December.
So the, the actual. The concern. The concern that the town, town attorney had, and I think it's a legitimate concern, was the possibility that you would be voting to increase your own salaries, which you cannot do. So January first, twenty twenty six, we avoid that, that, that question. So that's why it's January first, twenty twenty six.
Yeah, the new board will get paid at this rate for their work from their start date, and it avoids that pay, avoids confusion around that last paycheck for the board, and then new paycheck for the new board.
That is true.
And correct.
So I'm confused as to what, what days they are getting paid for, then, if, you know, if, if they are taking office on December eighth, then that would mean that, do they not get paid for that December at all?
No, they do, but remember, it's a quarterly.
It's a quarterly schedule.
So it's already fact, it's going to be factored in. We just can't increase it with this current board, because it has to be the next board.
It's really what you make per year, it's not what you make hourly. It's really what you make per year. It's not what you make hourly. Hourly or daily, yeah, that's not.
It's a quarterly thing, so it's not gonna interfere. Whether they start on the eighth or not, it's not gonna interfere with it. It's just gonna close us out, this current board out, and, and just to keep it smooth for checks and balances, you can't, we can't, we have to separate it.
Oh, no, I get, I get the fee. New folks are being paid, and you know, you don't wanna risk us getting paid at this higher rate. But, like, because I started our main twenty seventh, you know, is there a point? You know, am I getting paid for the number of days?
No, it's not exactly number of days, but you do, when you start in the middle of the quarter, there is some proration, I believe. Um, but it's not based on, it's like, is it a month and a half? Is it one month? Is it, it's, it's really more based on months. That kind of thing, to staff prorates it, done that. I mean, trying to calculate an hourly or a daily rate, it, it's just.
Well, just.
It's nitpicking, really.
By, by, by putting it this way, some people could argue that they should be paid at the lower rate for the partial bit of December that they were on the commission and then.
That's just not how it, how the system works.
Hold, I, I, I mean, I gotta see what, what I'm talking about, but is there a way that we can reword this instead of putting a date on it to say, um, before the term commencing? Was that what the attorney had issue with? Because that would note that, sure, if this board is getting paid at the end of December, that's the end of sports payment, but this salary range goes into effect for the board that's taking office on December eighth. And that board won't get paid until, for the first time, I believe, until March of twenty twenty six. So that's when those salary rates would be in effect. It wouldn't be this board being paid under these salaries.
Right. So I guess my, my, my base is concerned because the attorney, this was the attorney saying, use this date. Uh, because this was gonna be a quick meeting, we decided to save some money on attorney fees by not asking her to beat you. And so I don't know, what is your con, level of comfort with changing that, Administrator Anderson?
I, I don't have a lot of comfort in, in changing that because, uh, this was Attorney Roth consulted, you know, her own experience, she's got thirty years' experience, she's also, she consulted uh, several other attorneys as well and her colleagues, and this was the best course of action to, basically, this is the cleanest way to do it, and, and it, it really, uh, it doesn't leave us open to any real challenges as, as, as it relates to the current commission, the current council body of, uh, voting for a, a raise for, for themselves. So if you're asking me, I don't have a lot of comfort with changing that language. Um, it was recommended by Attorney Roth. If there are any questions related to what's gonna be prorated and how that works, I can contact Alta and get you those, those answers. Um, but, uh, I, if you're asking, in my opinion, I, I would rely on the expertise of the town attorney, and this is how she drafted this, this document, this ordinance.
But it seems cutting raw.
Yeah.
With the date, it shows, it shows that it's gonna be a different board because the, the date reflects that.
I, I trust our lawyer, um, so, and it is important to me that that this is budget neutral, which it is, and that the vice mayor receive salary in the coming term. So if we don't vote on this, then the, the council members don't get an increase and the vice mayor doesn't get any money in the next term. And so I think that we need to trust our lawyer, who has, as Clayton said, thirty years of municipal law experience and consulted with a number of other municipal lawyers on this. Um, we, you don't have to vote yes, but I think we should move forward with it how it is. Um, but we should hear from the public unless there are any other questions.
All clear.
Okay, so if you're online, um, raise your hand. If you're in the room, please come up to the podium. Uh, again, just state your name and the street you live on and, um, try to keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing no comments, is there a motion to ordinance twenty twenty five oh eight?
So.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Would you call that vote for us, please? Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Colbert? Councilmember La?
Aye.
Councilmember Erkley?
Aye.
All right, we will move on to administrative updates, and we will start with, um, council member reports. Uh, Commissioner Brooks, are you in transition? Do you wanna go last?
Yes, I'll be there, I'll be there shortly, yes.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner, or we can start at the other end of the table.
But, um, I attended the, um, uh, the trunk or treat festival. It was a large turnout. I just wanted to say kudos to uh, staff, T, Darnell, um, I saw, I met the new officer, uh, I think her name is Boy. Is it Butler, 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 Butler? Um, and, uh, we had a phenomenal turnout. Dirk did a good job, and I just wanna say, uh, kudos to everyone who participated, volunteered. You were sweating your butt off.
Yes, yes, yes. I was glad to come and help.
Um, I attended, uh, the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission's, uh, planning open house. Um, they had it just for municipalities, since I learned some of what they were planning for the, under the new, uh, director, I guess, is, is, he's been in for around three months now. Um, he talked about some of the work they're doing to improve permitting and try and speed up the process and make it so that way there's a website that people could submit at any time and follow how their permits are tracked along. Um, I attended the data center task force meeting, and then there's another one tomorrow, um, where they actually gave some of the cons of having data centers. Um, also attended an emergency communication symposium, uh, learning about, well, a lot of the stuff that they were showing off was much more than we could afford for our town, because it's like Laurel and Montgomery County and sort of like that, um. Uh, went to two open houses for new businesses in town and a funeral of a town resident, unfortunately, so.
Last meeting, I attended, um, the pop-up of coming business mix and mingle that happened down on the, um, county administration building plaza, um, got to see some of their vendors and some of the offerings that they'll be having once the space is open. Uh, also attended the police, uh, space open house, uh, which was a good opportunity to see how that space is being utilized and how the officers are, are, are integrating into that, uh, facility. Um, I was able to catch the end of the community day or the community cleanup day, um, on that, on that same day. Also attended a meeting, uh, the, of experienced Prince Georges, where they have an annual marketing outlook meeting. This year was focusing on leveraging AI. So I think there are a number, uh, tidbits that came out of there that may be ripe for, for consideration at some point in the future. Um, attended a meet and greet with Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission Chair Daryl Barnes. I think it may have been a separate event. Um, so got to, uh, catch his ear along with some other, um, members of municipalities across the county and, uh, had our monthly economic development work group meeting as well, pushing on some items there.
All right, I'll, I'll go next. Hopefully have Derek with us or Commissioner Brooks with us. Councilman Brooks with us, I'll get there. All right, so, um, over the last month, um, that, that'd be, since the last meeting, uh, I also attended the mix and mingle pop-up, uh, that they had downtown, worked with them on that, and I attended two ribbon cuttings, uh, that happened for, uh, Center Point Counseling Services and Study Buddy. So it's very exciting to see these new businesses. Um, I've met with five of our downtown property owners about various concerns from Deepie to parking. Um, I have attended a meeting with MNCPPC and Deepie to talk about our downtown par- parking. I have worked with the, uh, Prince Georges County on getting better signage for their parking at the Water Street Lot, which they're planning to install. Um, I attended the town cleanup, visited the police open house. Um, went to the police shred it event. Uh, went to our trunk or treat, which was amazing, and staff did an amazing, amazing job on that. I will say that again. Uh, and Commissioner Brooks also did an amazing job in his role with the events committee, events committee did great as always. Um, I was also able to attend, um, the annual marketing meeting, outlook meeting with, uh, Councilman Colbert and, um, and Administrator Anderson. I attended the Washington International Horse Show's diplomat night. There were sixty countries represented there by various diplomats, all of our, um, state level elected officials and some of our federally elected officials weren't there. Um, the town was recognized as being the home of Washington International Horse Show, so it was very exciting. Um, and for my day job, I attended the Main Street Maryland Conference, and I found a lot of value for the town of Upper Marlboro there, so I just wanna share that. I do think it's worth Commissioner Colbert looking at as we get into the budget next year, seeing about sending some folks from our economic development, uh, working group to that event, because there's a lot of really good value for very little money that is, um, being provided by DHCD for them. So that is my summary. Um, I do wanna just clarify one thing, uh, that is a little bit of confusing. I just wanna note that there are no data centers that will be located in the town of Upper Marlboro. We're very small and we don't have, um, any data center areas. I just wanna make sure everyone's aware of that. Um, Councilman Brooks, do you wanna try to give your report?
Sure, I can go, I can give it now. Um, I would like to say I attended two, three open houses for mix and mingle, uh, the new mental health center, center, center point, and the study buddy. So those were some good, uh, openings and people came out to, uh, give us, give each, uh, of the owner their well wishes. Um, I attended the police, new police station here on three oh one and met some new staff. The building was very nice, so that was nice. I also was involved with the cleanup day, and thanks to all the volunteers that came out to help us with that. And also, uh, this previous past, uh, Saturday, um, we had, uh, trunk or treat again, and that was humongous. Uh, it was so many people, um, so I wanna thank everyone for attending that, the volunteers, and thank Commissioner La for stepping in at the last minute and helping us with the candy. Um, it was a team effort and a good job to Ms. Bush and all the volunteers, but I just wanna say thank you to everyone who contribute with the police, uh, Darnell Barnes, his staff, everyone, because it was an effort from everyone to pull that together, and it was a tremendous success, and thank you to everybody that helped out.
Yeah. Now, do you have any updates for us?
Well, I can, I can go first. I, I'm not going to, uh, to be long. I, I did attend a lot of the, many of the functions that have already been mentioned. Um, I also attended the Main Street Conference. I, I will be attending the Maryland Economic Development Association, the, um, meet a conference on Thursday. That's from eight to two in Chesapeake Beach. Um, but I also wanted to give a real thanks to, uh, Talea, the events committee, Darnell, the police department, everybody that, that really, that worked really, really hard, um, to make, uh, trunk or treat a successful event. I also wanted to give, uh, credit to our HR generalist, her name's, um, Ailisa Newman, and I wanna, I wanna give her credit because the actual per diem document or policy that, that you approved tonight was a product of her hard work. So, um, as we look to grow the capacity of, of town government, um, you know, we're getting more and more qualified staff to help us do that. And it's, you know, they, and it's costing us less. Before, we had to contract out for these things, but now we have in-house staff doing these things. So I just wanna say again, thank you to everyone, uh, who's helping us, uh, move the town forward. Uh, we're starting to plan for the tree lighting. Um, I think that's the next event, and, um, you know, we, 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 we look forward to it. That's, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Director Bond?
Well, I have a couple, um, just to, you know, with, uh, uh, Commissioner, I'm sorry. If it's anything, um, I, I, I really wanna sort of give a kudo to Ms. Newman. Um, right now, we're going, uh, through the interviews, hiring process, uh, for Public Works, and I have to say, it is miles better, and it is so much faster um, than previous years. So I just believe that, and that's why I do wanna really, uh, thank you guys, and all the general government for that. Um, I know this has sort of been a topic for a couple, a couple different administrative, about the, for the large pine tree out front, um. My team and I, uh, actually did a bit of an inspection in inventory out front, um, this pad that we've and we've been trying to save it. However, I believe the large pine out front will have to be removed. Um, about four foot up, there's quite a bit of termite and bark beetle, more hopeful, that are starting to have the chance to decay. So before it becomes a problem, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, remove it. Um, there's also a large ton of dead limbs and other trees on property which we will attempt to save. Um, but once we remove those, we'll see how they, how they do. Um, other than that, I would like to feedback to the president of the MML Public Works Association about, uh, different policies, uh, the organization. Um, currently working on, well, think of notes for working on exterior lights at Town Hall, um, hopefully finish that this week. And, uh, we did a trunk or treat, and I just wanna thank everyone for, um, their assistance, especially when the, thank the, uh, thank Talea, especially wanna thank the best committee, but the police. The police really settled up and helped in a very big way when we had to sort of pivot, uh, once everybody got on team, so I just wanna really thank them for that.
That's cool.
Thank you. Do you have anything for us? All right, so we will now move on to public comment for items not on the immediate agenda. Um, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and the street you live on, and try, please try to keep your comments to three minutes. And if you're online, raise your hand.
Okay, can I also give a public comment? It's not a question or report?
Um, you're a commissioner, not, not a member of the public. Yeah. Um. All right, so see, is there, are there anyone with their hands raised online? I think, I think that little thing lights up when they do, so I think it's, you know, all right, okay, we have in.
Street, uh, and, uh, there are two things that I think about transparency. Uh, one, um, will be to have a transcription service so that these meetings will be recorded verbatim. Um, from back, I, I said I couldn't find what's about a lot of the amendments and all, um, and a key, April twenty seventh, uh, video, so I'm gonna piece together what had gone into it. I, I noticed that they spell all their verb, um, in, in the past, whether detail, uh, notes, you can read, you can search this, um, what the, um, when it is. And the second one is, um, I think that, you know, that, if I, I put it the right way, if I wanted the world to have it, I could put it read only format, and so that people could search for new devils and reds, and then they could have other and that would make it really simple for people to know, for sure. What are your tax money is going? And you can turn they have, you know, the maps and everything to tell. Um, you can't do that, that's just a bunch, that's gotten simpler, it's been, I understand too, the past is awful, that were detailed. And since, since twenty twenty two, there's. I understand to have exhausted that were detailed and this in uh since twenty twenty two, there's been the uh audits that have. They do the the new counter ledger stuff and so did the the, I think it's other things that, you know, to improve um transparency that people feel. That's. I can go behind those details um and care of them. There's A I transcription services set through the grade, but there are two points that can handle it. So so maybe you gotta look into that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing and hearing none, I'm I'm just gonna provide some information on this, the comment that was provided. Uh, we can look into transcription services, but we can't just use free AI versions. There's a lot of rules around government and and AI. Um. So the the meetings did change after with how we recorded minutes after we moved to virtual. So that that is a change in how the minutes are recorded and they're linked to these uh videos that you see here. Um. As far as following the individual books of, you know, when uh Talea buys paper clips, like that i- is a little bit a little bit of a high level of detail, but certainly the budget is, it is actually what you're asking for. It shows where we're spending our money. If you look at the budget book, um, that gets produced, it shows every line item we're spending our money on. Uh, and then as we do audit our updates throughout the year, budget adjustments throughout the year, you get to look at where we're at as we do and make those adjustments. Um, I see that that we, sorry, the audit's being published online. It's just not a standard government practice, but I have no problem. Um, as long as staff doesn't have a problem with us making a PDF of our audits and putting them online. However, I I do, I do, that's that's fine. I'm just saying it's just not standard government practice, and that's why maybe our previous town administrator did it, but I'm not saying we can't do it. We'll look into staff doing it. Regardless, if you ever wanna see anything, anyone in the audience, anything with budgets, anything with our audit, we have an NPIA request form. You can find it online. We comply with all NPIA requests. We are extremely transparent. We provide a lot of information upfront online, so a lot of our NPIA requests are really just hey, check our website. Uh, but if there's something that's not there, we're really happy to comply. It's not, no one's trying to hide anything. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that, uh Administrator Anderson?
No, no, that's that's accurate.
Okay, all right. Um, so. I kind of had closed the public comment period, but go ahead. Let's take public comment. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Brian Callicott, Church Street. Thanks for taking this, by the way. I know you don't have to. Uh, given the bad audio involved, transcription services are probably warranted. Just have a legal person review the YouTube videos going back and see if they're legally sufficient or not. I think that's probably reasonable. I've seen a few that are pretty bad. I think it's important for the town record to have this, you know, me being into history and all that. And I do wanna second the mayor's comments regarding NPIA. The town has responded pretty nicely whenever we've submitted the NPIA requests. I'm interested in the town. You you already know that. So I wanna know what's going on, and sometimes I don't get it from the meetings, and sometimes I don't get it from a personal conversation. So having that available to us is really an important option. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um. Right. Okay, so we are gonna go now to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. Let's give staff a minute because they just had to promote someone into a family. Do do we have a preliminary agenda?
Um, this TV.
Okay, I feel like we had. She's, oh, oh, I know what I wanted to to know.
Hmm.
That so the next meeting is November nineteenth.
Eighteen.
Eighteenth, okay, November eighteenth. And um it is Municipal Government Works Month in November. So the first item on our agenda is going to be, I think we have to do a proclamation that we all sign. Normally, I just sign the proclamation, but I think we all have to sign the proclamation for that. Uh, and we, I I've started this teen town hall takeover. Uh, and so what we do is some teens sign up. They come here, they learn about government. And then um I take them through a planning exercise where they come up with something they'd like to see their government to do. And then they present that to us. So um I think that's nice for them. It's good for them, and I'd like to make them the first item on our agenda. Or the whatever date that the clerk Bush set isn't the correct one. Um, and then I'm sure there's some other stuff that needs to get addressed by staff. We probably don't wanna try and do too much if there's a change in council.
Quick question.
Yeah.
And my apologies if I missed this discussion or if I was a part of this discussion and I'm forgetting it, but so are we having just one meeting in November?
Yes. Yes.
And and that's on the eighteenth.
Yes. Yeah.
So are we still celebrating Veterans Day?
Yes, but there will be a um breakfast, a Veterans Day breakfast, like we've done in the past.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Um. All right, I think maybe we'll start looking at the coop plan again, because I think the coop plan got pushed. Did you have anything specific, Administrator Anderson?
No.
Okay. So we'll do teen out town hall takeover, coop plan, and whatever else you guys need. Then do you have a salt contract this year?
What's the last one you're saying?
Okay. All right, all right. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Almost.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Um, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Two, two, sorry.
You have standing. Okay, sorry. I didn't hear you. All right, we are adjourned.
And I didn't fault that this this this.
They they canceled it.
Canceled it.